Call the order of the January 8th, 2024 Macedonia Planning Commission. We get a roll call?
Mr. Westbrook's?
Here.
Mr. Wallenhurst?
Here.
Mr. Cox?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Ms. Muskie?
Here.
All right, first item is approval of December 18th, 2023 minutes. Any comments? Actually, we'll do the public hearing minutes first. Any comments on those?
Nope.
I move to approve as submitted.
All right.
Second?
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
And then the January 8th, or December 18th, regular meeting minutes. Any comments on those?
Again, the move as submitted, approved as submitted.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right, first item is proposal at consolidation for Kirkland L T D and Eminem Welding. Is there someone here representing that?
Joe?
Yep.
Come on in, have a seat.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you?
Good. I'm Dave Wagner with Hannah Commercial, and I'm the agent for the
Property.
Owners.
Okay.
I'm Joe Potasky, the surveyor agent.
All right.
And Joe applied for this.
He knows.
I didn't see you sitting over there.
Would you want to give us an overview of what's being proposed?
If I could pass these, and we did bring 10, that's really the overview of the whole site. So just a brief history, I'll try to do it in 60 seconds, is this property was really bought as back land, probably Forest City or Sunrise Land Company back in the mid-'80s. It's a number of parcels, and interestingly enough, it's a number of owners. So although D A L M stands for the guys, Dom, Alloy, Lapine, and Miller, Mr. Alloy was the last of those four to pass away. He passed away a couple of weeks ago, and God rest his soul, he was a good man. He actually met with us, Robert, probably a month ago, he met with the mayor to talk about this. So this is really a legacy property, and we're looking for kind of a strategic solution. And we've been in discussions for probably three years for a conservancy to pick up the land, and we thought instead of just dumping it, and dumping is probably not the right word, but unloading all the land to a conservancy, we've had some strategic conversations with adjacent landowners, one of which is here tonight, Mr. Matt McCann, who's on Highland Road with Eminem Welding. So we've, the goal was to come up with a strategic plan, so we engaged Joe to survey the property. Our belief is it may not have ever been surveyed in total, it was bought kind of as a bundle. We did some other studies, and now we have a pretty good idea. There's some good land here, there's some pockets of wetlands, there's some pockets of floodplain, and there's really kind of two streets that access this property now, Capitol Boulevard on the west side and Empire on the east. So the goal is to sell off what we can to adjacent property owners, and then there is a developer who's looking at maybe a slightly larger parcel, but the real goal is to get this in the hands of a conservancy and just finish this whole process once and for all. So the first step in that is really the lot split and consolidation that we're contemplating tonight with Eminem Welding. And Mr. McCann and his family are going to, their goal is for us to split off the six acres of land, and they'll consolidate that into their existing parcel, which has frontage on Highland Road. They're also buying a little split of land that goes out to Empire, which we will have a cross easement on, so I believe one of the things that was required of your group was that we would have, make sure we've got cross easements and access to all the land, and we will have that. So, and then when we're finished, let's say, selling strategic pieces to folks, hopefully in the not-too-distant future, the balance of this land will be consolidated, the ownerships will be consolidated because they are slightly different, and this will all be in the hands, hopefully, of somebody who can take it to the next step.
So that little map you're looking at, the outline in pink is the area that's in Macedonia. There's a parcel of about 42, 44 acres in Northfield, and then the orange is what's getting split and conveyed to Eminem.
Okay.
I think in total, it's about 150.
About 157, 158 total acres.
Yes, yes.
Looks like a good place for a soccer stadium.
You've got a great memory.
I'd like to go over your comments.
Sure, my report dated December 31st, so effectively, there's just a few issues. It's a long memo, I provided an aerial photograph, just a snip of that on the front identifies some different colors. Blue is the subject of the consolidation with Eminem Welding. Green is a piece that, I'm not sure what happens to it, I feel like it's going to get combined with the red parcel 3303890. Pink is a parcel owned by Dom Land L T D, which is the ownership, according to the county, is the ownership of all these parcels that I'm talking about, as well as then the outlined light blue 3303389, which is a landlocked parcel to the south. So that's important because in my, in my report, I note that there's a few issues that have to be tackled pursuant to the subdivision regulations. First and foremost, under 110104 of the subdivision regulations, it gives the planning commission the administration authority of the subregs. Usually, there's a statement that says amendments or appeals to the subdivision regulations are confined to the purview of the planning commission. It doesn't say that, but in my opinion, being that the language is the way it reads, and the board zoning appeals is the authority that grants variances to the zoning code, I do think this planning commission has that ability to, let's say, amend or create, I don't want to say appeals, but let's just use that word for the time being, because that's very much a variance term, but appeals to the subdivision regulations. With that said, there's a few issues as it relates to the proposal, the width-to-depth ratio under 111703A3, "The depth and width of properties laid out or reserved for commercial industrial purposes shall be adequate to provide for off-street parking and service facilities required by the type of use and development contemplated. Permanent reservation of suitable buffer and easement areas may be required where deemed essential. Such areas shall normally be a part of a budding lots or building sites." And I refer you down to my comment number four with that. The next being the width-to-depth that I just mentioned, I do think that we probably have it in excess of 3:1 maximum. Planning commission, I do think, can, you can deal with that accordingly. Then number four, the most important thing, every lot shall butt on a public street. So while not part of this application, 330 through 389, the blue outline parcel is a landlocked existing parcel owned by Dom Land L T D. The green I mentioned, I'm not sure what's happening with that piece, the large red has access only from Highland, because the access out to Capitol will be cut off with the consolidation with the welding company. So the pink, again, fronts on Capitol, owned by the same ownership. So to meet the requirement of having frontage on public road, I believe all of the red, which includes 3303704, the green, which again is subject to, not sure what's happening with it, the pink, and the blue that's landlocked should be combined into one single parcel. Insofar as a conservation group or somebody picking up the land that's really not suitable for anything other than conservation, you're certainly welcome to place a conservation easement on that, there may be some economic value to doing so, but to leave it as a landlocked parcel doesn't work under the subdivision regulations. And then finally, the back of Eminem Welding, which will now have access out to, to the cul-de-sac, public road, the back of that parcel as it stands right now has some haphazard sort of outdoor storage, what appears to be not hard surface, which is, under the code, has to be hard surfaced, and then sort of arranged in a neat, organized manner. My concern is that picking up that back piece that goes out, that stem that goes out that we'll see, and then, of course, the piece that's to the, to the west, abutting the green, that's consolidated with Eminem, would be a continuation of that non-conforming condition, and that, that can't take place as well for the city's sake. While that's an enforcement issue, I think we need to try to cut that off at the pass here at this level and avoid continued pattern of that non-conforming condition. With that said, I can answer any questions you have.
So, simple question, and Joe might have more complicated questions, but would, the goal is ultimately to have all of this land that remains in a conservancy. So to go through, and because a lot of this had been surveyed before, Joe's done a great job of telling us our current meets and bounds, our outside boundaries, but if we're ultimately going to put this in, we're going to sell this land, it's not going to be a conservation easement, they're going to buy it, and we'll donate, it's a bargain sale, so they'll, we'll get a donation and a, and a sale. Would access easement suffice? It suffices for them.
Yeah, not, not for the city. So the city requires access from a publicated, a public road, a dedicated public road, so 3303389 won't be able to be transferred and sold with no, no, no access. So that's that large one
Yep, yep.
Toward the bottom.
I think most of that's probably going to end up in the conservancy.
Yeah, all of that'll be in conservancy.
Yeah, because you mentioned a larger developer, so assuming a larger developer comes along, they're probably going to want to go off the pink parcel identified on that, with, with that access up to Highland as well. I see no reason why having it all combined into one conforming parcel would impact their, their use of the property. And then you could certainly put conservation easements or whatever you wanted to do, or if they, somebody buys one parcel, gets whatever they can, carve out what they can for development, they could put the conservation easement on the remainder of the land.
Hmm.
And I'm familiar with the bargain sale and, and the IRS forms that you'd have to Frazier sign off on, and the mayor would have to sign off on that as well, and nothing would preclude you from doing that by conforming with the code.
So currently, those 03389 and the 03704
They want these four.
Are landlocked now.
Yeah.
Technically by that, but, but there would be, because they're owned in a similar entity, they're, they would grant each other easements, so I, that, that's
704 is not currently landlocked.
I'm sorry, you're right, 3389 is landlocked.
That, that's the only one that's landlocked. You'll landlock 704 by consolidating with Eminem, and that's my point, you can't do that.
So, so are you saying we need to consolidate 890, 704, 389, and that little green parcel?
Yeah, everything you see, the green, the red outline, the pink and the light blue, that would need to be combined. And then the piece of, that you're, that you're selling to Eminem, which is to the east of the green, that'll be combined with Eminem and a portion of
There's only one problem.
Oh, is that? There's two different owners, there's a Dom and there's a Dom 2.
Dom 2 isn't involved in any of these, to my knowledge, not according to the county.
Checking.
I can't remember what that is.
Dom 2 is to the east of 389, the one you identified on your map, that's Dom 2.
I think these are Dom 2 here. I, I thought that was
So I purposely avoided any
Yeah, I think those, yeah, I think those parcels are Dom 2.
Yeah, I purposely avoided any of Dom 2 because they're a different ownership.
Yeah, they're all Dom Land L T D.
Okay.
All four in question.
So then basically, what you're looking at, would look at us to do to combine those four parcels, or two, yeah, those four parcels into one parcel, correct? And then as we split off to adjoining owners, we would have to split out of that larger one.
Yeah, because then we would take a look at that split and confirm it conforms with the requirements at that time. So it's the city's only opportunity, when you have non-conforming situations and landlocked parcels, their only opportunity, you know, we can't go through and just force you to do it, so you do it on an application, in this instance, for consolidation, so now's the time to catch it, and then when you come back later with your, you know, conservation or whatever you do, we'll, we'll make it work and make it work for you, provided it conforms to the code.
So, we're in a situation where we've, we've worked for, and Matt, Matt's been very patient, but you know, you've got lenders and timing and the world that we all live in, is there a way to agree to the lot split and consolidation with the purview that we will, we will do this and we will
So you have that in front of you?
I do.
If, if, I, on my opinion, and the commission can take it or leave it, but if you take the pink, the green, the red, and the light blue, and say you're going to consolidate that all, and the commission grants authority administratively, but at the same time also grants an exception to the width-to-depth, because I don't know what that width-to-depth is, but my suspicion is it's, it's not going to conform to the 3:1, but if you put that into a motion now, it could be done administratively if the commission's okay with that, and you don't have to come back.
So if I can, and, and I don't, I was going to refer to Robert, we've talked about this, so we're in discussions with IRG, who's consolidated some land at the end of Empire. We've, we've agreed at least in principle to talk to them about they want to straighten out Empire. So we've got some land which is Dom 2 that we're looking at, so just full disclosure, hopefully we can do that, and that would, we'd come back in front of you for that issue. We do, there is another neighbor that's on Highland that has expressed an interest as recently as today to pick up that land and that, that green parcel, and maybe some of the land going west of that. And once again, we're, we've got a big awkward piece of land, and we're trying to accommodate folks that are, that are current residents, commercial residents in Macedonia. So that green piece and maybe some land to the west of that might be picked up by one of the Highland Road frontages.
Yeah, and, and if and when that happens, you'll have to do a survey and consolidation plat anyhow, so I
Maybe we do those at the same time.
You can, yeah, if you're prepared to do that.
We can carve that out, and I think we could, we actually
We have the technology.
Yeah, we, we did that a month ago, and then he didn't need as much as we had cut out, so
Sure.
We can go back, and that would address the green and, and the extra
The other, yeah.
Yeah.
We could address the problem of that, yes.
Yeah, from, from my, my perspective, from the planning commission, my, my recommendation is deal with the problems that we have in hand now, which is what I just described. Make one large parcel, grant a width-to-depth, if, if you're okay with it, for administrative approval, once we approve that plat map and consolidation for Eminem, then any subsequent changes and sales off to, of that, what would amount to be the northern part or the rear of those Highland frontages, we can just deal with those back here at the commission at whatever time. This way you can get going and
Right.
You're not held up.
That's our mission, is to get going, and ultimately, I mean, we've been in discussion with the mayor, this hopefully hasn't been happening in the back end to say, you know, the largest part of this is going to be a conservancy, and hopefully the city will get engaged with the group that's looking at doing that, and, and they do want access, they don't need to own the street frontage, so I don't know how that will work if it's in conservancy, they just, they want to get in there to maintain it from time to time, but they, they may or may not own the street frontage.
Yeah, you just grant them an easement, so I, I work with Western Reserve Land Conservancy all the time, I'm assuming that's who maybe we're talking about, they don't need to own the, the access, they just need an easement from you or whoever that grants that to them, but for the purposes of this body to approve a lot, a lot split consolidation, they have to show that you have frontage on a dedicated road. And so what I'm suggesting will cure those problems, you grant your cross easements and access easements to whoever, Ohio Stream, Western Reserve, or whoever, but that's all behind the scenes and not
Right.
For administration or the planning commission to necessarily have to be involved in.
Okay. So I think we could, I'm sorry.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm a little confused, if, if you're trying to parcel this off now, why wouldn't you figure out what your neighbors, how much of this they want, and as I understand it, whatever they don't take is going to be sent over or easemented over to the land conservancy? That's sort of what I understood.
Transferred.
Yeah, transferred over. But, but, but wouldn't it be easier, almost what Brian said, that figure out what the neighbors want, how much they want, and then make a parcel out of that, rather than splitting it up now and then have to unsplit it, because if they want, might be more than some of these parcels you're trying to make? Is that, does that make sense?
In a perfect world, if everybody cooperated, that's exactly what
That's what we would do.
The problem is, we can't get some of these folks to say, yes, I'm ready to move forward, and I want four acres. So we're, we've got to deal with the people's time tables as they come forward. Matt, Matt's been very forthright and patient, his bank is ready to move forward, the other folks aren't quite at the same time.
Well, why do you have to do anything right now? If, if you don't have a buyer's ready, ready and ready willing?
We have one buyer, which is Matt from Eminem Welding for the six acres, we've, we've been working together for probably the better part of a year, and we've all agreed, and all, the only step remaining is the lot split and consolidation, which he's agreed to. So we're here tonight to really talk about that.
That one.
I think that the city planner's points are valid, and frankly, within the code, and he's right, now's the time to address those, so I think we're prepared to say the things that he's looking for, we'll, we'll do. So we can go back with Joe, and we'll do one big consolidation of the Dom land, but that, there's four parcels.
Well, couldn't you parcel six acres off for that one, that you, you already know how much he wants, and that would be two parcels rather than one big one?
Correct.
Is that what you're going to do?
Well, we're really, how many Dom parcels are there now, three or four? So we're going to consolidate the remaining land
I get you.
And then we're going to divide it up again
That'll split that, yes.
When we go to do the work for the conservancy.
Okay.
So to try to expedite a buyer, who's an active buyer, who's got a business that's growing, he's trying to add jobs, we need to do that, and, and we'll honor what, what the planning is looking to do with respect to consolidation of the balance, and try to get as close to code what you're looking for, and then we'll split it again when the time comes, come back in front of you.
You ever, you ever hear of trying to hurt cats? That's what he's saying.
Sort of, sort of understand it.
Yeah, yeah, just to
But you know, if, if the six acres are down here, maybe this
They're not.
Maybe that neighbor, or whoever the neighbor is, might have access to a road, and that would be easier, whoever the six acre guy is.
So that, that's a little bit of a, that map's a little difficult, because some of that's outside the jurisdiction, so I would stick to this one here that I gave you in front of my
Yeah.
And, and everything in red, pink, green, and light blue would all be consolidated into a single parcel.
Well, I, I follow, I follow that, but it sounds like, you know, double work, but that's okay, I, I follow you.
Keeps us in business.
Yeah, just a couple things, you guys probably saw my memo, Joe, when we get to that point, we'll need signature blocks on the plat for myself and for the planning commission chairman.
Yep.
Just two of them. And I guess, just to be clear, you mentioned you were speaking with the developer on this property, and you also mentioned conservancy several times, I guess I'm not completely sure what their intention is.
Oh, that the
You could clarify one more time for everybody, they might be thinking the same thing.
So, the, the developer, it's IRG, and they're
Yeah.
They're, they're here in the city
Correct.
So we're, we're dealing with Michelle, we've, we've both said, if, you know, I can mention her name publicly, and we're, we just said we'll cooperate, so we've got, they're looking for a way to straighten out that street
Okay.
Do a code-compliant street. Others have stepped in and said, hey, maybe we'll do something, we have a contract in front of us with a conservancy
Okay.
And it's flexible in whether we sell them X or Y, so to your point, we're trying to figure out what the neighbors want, we're trying to be good neighbors and say, now's the time to try to slice this off, and if you want to buy two acres, otherwise it's going to go to
Otherwise, you'll never get it again.
Right.
Okay, all right, so the, the active developer discussion is with IRG and Empire.
Anybody that would use this land's going to need, in addition to your approval, court engineer approval, most likely to do anything that it's meaningful.
Yeah, correct, and as you guys are probably aware, much of this Dom land is either in a FEMA flood zone or wetland, repairing setback is all over the place, so it's difficult, I understand.
Mm-hmm.
So, okay, that's all I got here.
Mr. Riddick, do you have any?
No, I definitely don't.
Okay. So, Mr. Francis, there's the exception to the, with the depth ratio we want to grant, as well as require the consolidation of those four, your third point in the conclusion there about the outdoor, non-conforming outdoor storage, is that should that be a condition of this as well, that it doesn't expand, is what you're saying here, it doesn't expand to the new area?
Yeah, so really, this is a, so, I mean, this is a technical analysis, right? So what they want to do is move lot lines and things, and I'm just simply pointing out that it's a non-conforming condition, and it, it shouldn't expand, and if the intent is to have that accessway and additional land to stack more stuff back there, you're going to need to comply with the code. I'm assuming Eminem Welding is here, so he's, he's hearing this, so you can't stack stuff on, or outdoor storage on dirt or gravel, it's in industrial or non-residential district, has to be paved, so when that time comes, you have to pave that area if you're looking to do it for outdoor storage.
But we don't necessarily need to make a condition of this at this point as part of the
I think just for the record, that, that, you know, it can't happen.
Okay.
But it wouldn't negate this, you know, that somebody at the county's not going to not record the lot split and consolidation, because we're unhappy with the rear of the property. Yeah.
So, so good, doesn't need to be mentioned?
I don't thi, I think just, just the conversation on the record's important.
Okay. Is there any more comments from you guys?
No.
Is anybody want to take a stab?
No.
Okay. I'll make the, make a motion to approve the lot split and consolidation with two conditions, or two notations, the planning commission would grant an exception to the width-to-depth ratio identified in 111703B1. Susan's second hit.
To grant?
To grant an exception to the width-to-depth ratio in section 1117.03B1, and require that the four parcels identified in the planner's memo be consolidated into one parcel. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any more discussion here?
Um, I, yeah, I think I heard you reference my December 31st memo and the very articulately color-coded map as a general reference for the consolidation.
All right, any more discussion in the group here?
Okay.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. We'll be back. We'll be back, probably a few times. Be afraid. Open it first.
All right, so this one first with Oswald Capital, this is All right, so this one first with Oswald Capital. This is first of a couple here. This is 8100. I guess we'll probably be dealing with.
Which one do you want?
Right. And we'll probably deal with these kind of, at least the first couple together. Do you want to deal with them one by one?
Yeah, if you're okay with it, Mr. Chairman, the order I have them in is we could do the one by Coles and Chili's and then the Cinemark. And then I think the third one is the more, let's say, in-depth discussion.
All right. Well, let's do, let's do that.
I can just give some background.
Yeah, please do.
So we acquired the property in 2017. In 2018, we started working on leasing the out parcels. I think we came in front of this body in 2018, 19 and received approval for a McAllister's Deli by Hobby Lobby on Route 82. And then we had approval for a Five Guys and Aladdin's Eatery in front of Cinemark. So those two you've seen before. This is the first item on the agenda is what you have not seen before as far as what we're thinking about doing here. We are in talks with a retailer to go basically parallel to where Chili's is today. So we have obtained consent from Coles to add a retailer in this area. We've obtained consent from our lender to record what's proposed in front of you for a lot split in this area. And in conjunction with that, we would record a ECR, which basically states that the access and everything that operationally is entailed under the property will operate as it is today and will operate as one cohesive property. The only time you ever notice a difference if you were go to the auditor's site and look up the parcel lines. And then our attorney submitted a letter to, just giving some background as to why tenants, retailers, that sort of thing, wants separate tax parcels. And just to sum that up, summation of that is they want to know what exactly their real estate taxes are rather than be prorated. And we get in arguments all the time, anchor tenants, small tenants. It's a constant negotiation and battle annually because taxes change and then we have to rebuild everybody. So the tenants like to know their parcel XYZ, they pay whatever their taxes are and it's not up for debate or anything like that. Another item is they'd like to know exactly what mortgage is recorded on that property so that if there was a foreclosure or something, they usually get the subordination of that mortgage so they can stay in place and their building and their right to that land is not foreclosed out. And the same goes for a real estate tax sale as well. So that's why tenants like separately parceled properties. And that's what we're trying to achieve here today is to give three separate tenants and four total tenants if you include two tenants at Cinemark. So the Seven Brew, which is at Route 82, McAllister's Deli. I don't know where they went after COVID, to be perfectly honest. I haven't heard from them. So that's, you guys have seen that or some of you, there's some fresh faces here.
Wasn't that kind of where the Seven Brews proposed?
It's exactly the same spot. Same spot. Same spot. So Seven Brew is going where McAllister's was. We're still in talks with Five Guys to go in front of Cinemark. We're trying to get a second tenant to join them in that building. Aladdin's went away post-COVID. And we have a national retailer who sent us a letter of intent for this area adjacent to Chili's. But we wanted to come in and make sure we can achieve everything that they want us to do in order to comply with the terms of their letter of intent. So as far as overarching concerns, as far as tenant rights, ECRs, obstructing access, anything like that, it's all in compliance with every document that's, that's recorded at our property.
Okay.
So, I mean, with that being said, I think we can jump into 8100 Macedonia Commons Boulevard, which is the Coles property. And that's the second agenda item.
Francis, if you'd go over here and comment on that one?
Yeah, sure. I think generally what was just stated is, is all just fine. The only thing, two, two points of clarification. One, planning commission has seen this previously. You were proposing an IHOP here at one point. And so.
I forgot. We took that. I wasn't sure. I probably took that. Wow, you're right.
Yeah, this is the location where you were doing that. And then to create the lot split, the idea of having all the, you know, cross easements, you call it the ECR, all that will be, need to be reported and obviously provided to the city because it's, you know, just necessary because you're sharing all of that infrastructure, which is fine. So this parcel, my report dated January 1st, and what I call parcel E3, because I think that's what it was referenced as by the surveyor. E3 meets the code requirement of 116705J, 30,000 square feet. Again, need those access easements. And then any sort of, I think there were a few issues that I identified in my April 2019 memo. I'd just make that subject to this, any sort of approval the planning commission puts forth tonight. And then we'd want to take a look at, you know, some of these things like landscape islands and perimeter landscaping, that was all part of the original overall development. That can't go away when a new national retailer comes in. They like to, they tend to want to do their own thing. Those have to understand, those are in place for a reason because it's all part and parcel with the overall entire development. So I get that some of the islands may be removed to put a building in, we'll just create new ones.
Relocate.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But they can't go, you know, destroying the buffer that's out, you know, out on the main, out on the main road and that sort of thing. But we can work through those as part of the site plan when they come in. So I see no issue with this one, provided those documenta, the documentation's provided. It's included in your approval, the subject to, and then provided to the city in a recorded format.
I did send Friday to Bob, the three ECRs. I sent them to you in an email on Friday. I don't know if you've seen it yet.
Yes, I did.
Okay, so I did send the, they're not recorded. There are draft documents of the ECR. So they're, the city needs to look at them.
I'd suggest that, you know, we look at those administratively and Mark Cadetti may want to take a look at it as well.
Yeah, Chairman, I did not prepare a memo for this one. I really don't have any issue or comment. The only question I had was regarding blanket ingress egress across the property, just like the rest of the Commons operates. You already answered that. It's, I don't want to use the word free for all, but everybody has the right to.
Correct.
To drive across one property to get to another. So that was my only, my only thought.
Did you guys got questions?
No.
Okay, well, I think, yeah, this one seems relatively easy. I'll make a motion to approve the lot split, subject to planner's comments, which includes providing the access easements for administrative review and also includes his 2019, April 2019 comments on the same site. Susan, did I rattle it off too much?
I got it.
Got it?
I'll second it.
All right, any more discussion?
I'm assuming the ECR addresses maintenance. So national retailer comes in, parking lot starts to get all potholed. They're going to address that and that'll be in that ECR. They'll maintain it or fix it. Someone's going to pay for it, whether it's them on their own property or there's some sharing arrangement. But, you know, you're, you're driving from Coles and you, you know, you hit, you know, Lake Louise in the new retailer's parking lot. Someone's going to fix it.
So in full disclosure, we're actually creating the parcel and ground leasing it to an affiliate of ours. And then the affiliate of ours will construct the building on the ground lease parcel. So in this case, the retailer should just be inside the four walls and our ground lease tenant, who would be a tenant of ours, its affiliate, will, would be responsible for that. And then if there's self-help rights and that sort of thing in the ECR in the event there's a pothole, the joint property has self-help rights to address those items.
Yeah, that's, that's all I need.
Yeah.
The shells of where you move things around.
Right. So I didn't want you guys to see it. Random lease recorded, it'd be like, we never talked about that, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Kevin, I got one question that came up in my mind.
Okay.
Didn't we at one time in front of Coles, they were going to have electric charging stations for cars? Remember, whatever happened, is that on hold or is that coming in or is that?
Presumably it's on hold and hopefully went away. I don't know.
It went away. They're all fired. I mean, they couldn't fire anybody there if you tried, Dan.
We heard about that, in other words.
Yeah, so I, I mean, if you got one minute, I went to a shopping center convention in Vegas and the only thing that was there were car charging outfits and car washes. It was right during COVID and we struck up a conversation with those guys and they were really interested, but literally they're, they're gone.
Okay. All right, any more questions? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, I've got one. All right, so next, moving down the road. This is what the chapters.
So the next one will be the out parcel for the Cinemark. 8161 Macedonia Commons.
Any addition you need to say about that or jump in the brand?
No, as previously mentioned, just to refresh everybody's memory, this is the proposed Five Guys and second used it, that was previously approved. Obviously, we have to come back and get that made stated, but we're working on it, trying to actively market that space.
All right, go ahead.
See, I like Shake Shack better, I don't know if you can get them.
We tried.
Try and.
Yeah, so my report, January 1st. So as you just heard, we have seen this before. I know the city engineer has a concern just about the gap, I think there's a gas line that goes through this area, so we talked through that. But previously, we had identified the parking stalls were nine and a half by 18. The code report is 10 by 20. You had, you had noted that you were going to seek a variance at that time for that. I don't know who or where went it by.
These are 10 by 20. If you look at the site plan C2, we did change that back then to, to the 10 by 20. I think they're all 10 by 20 now.
It looks like. Did you re-stripe the lot?
No, we moved stuff around, no, around the building.
He's talking the existing lot.
Oh, you're talking about the whole existing lot.
The proposed parcel.
Yeah, so whenever this comes through, so when you have a, a part, you're going to create a parcel that's going to have all these ECRs and sharing, right? The parts, the parking slips have to be 10 by 20.
Okay.
So if you're, you're going to impact the existing lot and then obviously impact the hard surface underneath the new parcel that's being created. When that's all being done, it needs to be 10 by 20. You previously had noted that you needed to get a variance.
Okay.
And so I might go by, I have all this stuff. My wife's going to hang me if I keep saving this stuff. But you need to, either you deal with that on your plan or you'll seek a variance. You previously noted you were going to seek a variance. I just didn't know if that ever happened. If it did, it would have expired anyhow.
Are you talking the whole Cinemark parcel or just the parcel that's created for this one?
Wherever you're going to impact needs to be 10 by 20.
Okay, anyway, that's what I thought, where we're impacting. And I think the new stuff we're installing.
It looks like it's all 10 by 20.
We had changed, yeah. So if it's existing, we'd re-stripe in those sections. Most of this whole block that you see will get repaved because it's all going to get torn up for, you know, that, that new, the new subplot that's 30,000 square feet.
Yep. And anything gets torn up.
Basically torn up, we'll get new paved and then re-stripe.
Yeah, so that's, that's, that's the only thing. And then you had the issue that, about the easement that we can talk through with the engineer. So I see no issue with this one, just like the last one, make it subject to. And then for Mr. Gelati, yes?
Yeah, my only question is, I believe you guys would be aware of the gas line and gas.
Yeah.
Slices right through.
I was offset to relocate it until it slapped. So we have them in play, the gas company?
Yeah.
Sent them drawings. We have an exhibit to go around the building, relocate it.
Sure.
That's all in play.
Yeah, and relocate easement to follow.
Correct.
Yeah. So just make sure you show that on your future submittals.
Okay.
Bob, you got anything?
I have nothing.
Okay. Right, you guys have questions?
Not me. I don't.
I'll make a motion to approve the lot split, subject to the comments in Mr. Francis' January 2024 memo. Yeah, Mr. Gelati's December 2023 memo.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
None.
All right, well, good. All right, two down. So the last one's the lot split and you've got a plan.
Well, the site plan is a separate submit over and for the lot split. And then I think there's a separate agenda item for the site plan for that one. The tenant, go ahead and.
Yeah.
So there's a little bit of background here that I'd like to talk about for a minute. I'm sure people are familiar with it, but there's a, an Ohio Savings ATM is that, in that area right there. There's the Tesla charging stations right here. And then there's the Tesla charging stations, electrical equipment, which is in a basic enclosure. So we're trying to avoid those being in the newly created parcel. So that's why you see an L-shaped parcel. So we avoid those. Seven Brew did not want those in their quote-unquote leasable area. So that's why you see what we've planned today. The next applicant will go over the actual site plan, but the lot split and site plan are like hand in glove so that they go together. So that we've designed the lot split and the tenant has designed their site plan within that lot split.
All right. Francis, go over.
Yeah. So I figured what you just described was the case. The issue is it creates all sorts of issues the way it's designed. First and foremost, it doesn't meet the requirements, as you're aware, at 21 or so thousand square feet. It has to be 30,000 square feet.
We submitted to BZA for that one.
Yeah. And I would just generally say, I don't know what your practical difficulty is other than your, your potential suitor doesn't want those things on their property and you don't have any more land that you can give them without creating more problems. So that's neither here nor there. So we know the planning commission can't do anything as it relates to creating the parcel to find out what the BZA is going to do. I would not recommend that they do an IFCOM on this one, that they, that they continue this until the Board of Zoning Appeals acts and then it comes back. And then I just, under my second comment, I just said I didn't fully understand the existing traffic flow, the pavement markings, landscaping, how that's all going to work. So the drive-up ATM is going to dump into effectively a piece of land that the charging stations are situated on. And then they go through, I'm assuming with some sort of ECR cross easements over the, over the land that's being created by Seven Brew.
The ATM and the Tesla stations are not impacted whatsoever by the proposed plan?
Well, they're going to, they're going to dump into this piece of the parcel that you're creating. And so, you know.
You mean they're going to, they're going to cross it.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, they're going to cross over there. But then you have the recorded parking for Seven Brew is up there. So it's on a site plan issue, but that's, it's a bit of a concern. I get you have parking up there, but that parking really is only ever used for the Tesla charging stations or some random person doing whatever they're doing parks there. But it's not really parking that anyone uses for the shopping center, to my knowledge. But it's not really parking that anyone uses for the shopping center, to my knowledge. It's required parking, but I don't think anybody's parking in that to access the shopping plaza. So less of a concern about safety now where it's gonna be the required parking for Seven Brew and we're coming right through that access lane to that parking area. So again, that's a site plan issue. And then, again, another site plan issue with regard to the garbage dumpster in the front setback. I noted in the site plan report for the next item as well, that that's, they're gonna need to be relocated or some action to allow them to be in that front setback.
Which front setback are you talking about? I was confused on this one. Because the setback on this is a hundred feet, which is at the property line. Are you saying there's another setback created by doing this? Or the existing hundred-foot setback is right at the property line? That's how we go with the width. So everything on this, the structures are behind the hundred-foot existing setback line today that was created by our plat back in ninety-something. I know I sent that to Bob as well. So I'm not sure what setback.
Yeah, so when you create a parcel, you have a setback on your property lines. You're creating the parcel.
Within the parcel, you're saying, okay.
Yeah, so you have, I'm gonna do this on the fly here. This is your site plan. This is your site plan for Seven Brew. This is a parcel line that you're gonna have a setback to.
So you're saying other, okay.
So you're in that, that's it, you're in that setback.
The whole new building would be in that setback, not just the.
I understand.
Okay.
Yeah, you're gonna have, I mean, so you have some issues as it relates to that. The parcel's undersized for what your, the layout that you're trying to do. But nevertheless, that's something you'll have to tackle with the board zoning appeals.
Was Donovan McCallister here? How was that handled?
I don't think it was like that.
I don't know if you forgot that part. I suppose we approved it. I thought we approved it.
Yeah, we, we didn't approve it. The only thing, so planning commission looked at things at a very conceptual level. There's, there was no final, you know, final approval. We have a preliminary for the sake of giving you some direction, but it's really not a approval, if you will. So that's as far as that got. It was kind of real high-level stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
If this would be an internal parcel, would it have a, what would be the setback? Since it's internal and not off of eighty-two.
It's gonna have setbacks on property lines.
What would that be for the front? Twenty-five or fifty on this?
I don't know.
That's the question, because you're not fronting Aurora Road. If you're fronting Aurora Road, it'd be the hundred-foot setback. Since you're creating an internal parcel, what, what are the setbacks on it?
Your parcel has to have a front, a side and a rear, so it depends on the definition.
Well, and this parcel goes out all the way to eighty-three. So your front setback, in theory, would be the existing hundred-foot one? I don't, that's what's kind of great when I saw that comment. I wasn't sure.
Yeah, yeah, maybe.
So when you have unusual parcels.
I know.
You have to dig through.
So our parcel would have frontage on Aurora Road.
Yeah, you have frontage on eighty-two.
Yeah, eighty-two, so what setback? Now, if you're saying we're kinda create, that parcel would then have a setback all the way through it. I'm not sure what that one would be. I know what you're talking about, but it's.
Yeah.
You're trying to create a flag lot.
Right.
So the reason, I, I actually am not sure your building maybe would be impacted. But you could argue that's a side, potentially a side setback because you do have a frontage on eighty-two. But nevertheless, even if it's a side setback, you're still gonna have issues with certainly the dumpster.
What would the side setback be, you know? Some of them are ten and twenty-five and.
Twenty-five, I think.
Okay.
Yeah, twenty-five feet. Yeah, twenty-five feet. I'm assuming Seven Brew wants that exposure to eighty-two. Is that? Is that the deal?
Correct.
As opposed to internal, you know, like an internal road, like Massonian Commons, being off somewhere internally?
Yeah, I mean, we specifically let it six-thirty in the morning here so they can see the traffic on eighty-two.
Yeah.
That's where they wanna be.
Yeah, because that whole area is very congested. That, and I know the city engineer's gonna talk to that, but that access point off eighty-two, where, you know, just adjacent to the parcel you're wanting to create, that's a very congested area. Obviously, the coffee people love that, right? They want, they want that, to capture that. But it, it does, you know, it does speak to the, the need to understand traffic as it relates to this potential use. Not for this lot split discussion, but something you need to.
Got you. Yeah, just, just a couple. I get a little confused. You say the reason you want this at all, instead of just having the coffee shop here, is they want to be able to come off the road. Is that, is that why you want this? This red one going up? Why do you need that? Why do they need that? Why don't they just have a square?
Give me a rectangular without frontage.
Without this. Why do you, why do they need something up there?
It was our understanding that the city requires that a parcel have frontage on a dedicated street. So if we eliminated that quote-unquote flagpole out at eighty-two, we wouldn't have a frontage on that.
So you, you, your tenant doesn't really need this thing?
Nobody needs it. We're trying to comply.
The ECR lets us have the cross-traffic.
And the other thing is, there, there's a lot of traffic down this road. Is that gonna impact your coffee shop, you know, Key Bank and all that that you know about?
Stop signs, it's, it's.
It's the problem?
Those are all.
Yeah. I guess those are my question. And Pam Schultz, you, you read about her. She's our architectural person. You read all her comments?
That'll be, that'll be the next.
You have three sixty.
That'll be the next part of this, where they talk about the site plan and building examples.
So I'll just generally say, you know, the, the commons, it predates me just a little bit, but, you know, it was set up to have these out parcels and they're larger performing parcels and they're sort of strategically, I get you're trying to fill in some of that space and, and turn some of that frankly dead pavement area into revenue and then also provide the city with some additional opportunities, which is good. But the outbuildings or the outlots were, you know, they were sort of designed and set up to, to conform. And that, that thirty thousand square foot's been around all the way back to the genesis of the, of the development. So this one, it's, it's difficult to, to create it less than a quarter of my code.
Was that originally possibly set up to be similar to the way that, like, the Key Bank building and Wendy's and the other ones are, that they're supposed to kind of sit more up there like that? Kind of where the Tesla charging stations are? Is that possibly how that was really thought through and designed?
It could be, although you have, you have, all you have outback is up, right? They have their own.
Yeah, they do, yeah, right.
I, I think it was a function of, it was originally a grocery store that had a higher parking.
Right, yes.
And now it's hot a lot here. The parking intensity is nice. I think it's safe to say there's plenty of parking. Yes, chunks.
Yeah, it wasn't a personal park. It was more just like, how did they think through the outlot design, I guess?
Yeah, and I think they were trying to just provide the grocery park.
So I guess in, in terms of the, the two issues, we've got the lot split and we've got the site plan. We can't approve the lot split, so it was your recommendation to continue it to the next meeting. We should just deal with that while we got it and just dig in a little bit more to the, to the site plan.
Yeah, I mean, I think the, the whole thing, you know, it's all predicated on board zoning appeals approval. If they don't, then they're gonna have to come back here, you know, sort of, you know, say back to the jungle board.
So we'll table item four. The lot split. Then we'll go to the BZA and we'll be back.
Yeah, and we can talk here for a little bit more about the site.
Uh, we'll, we'll, there's a whole other applicant. We'll be here, we'll be here.
Yeah, we're here.
We'll sit here just, because they're new, but we'll be here to, to help.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion to continue the lot split application to the next meeting unless they've had board of zoning appeals meeting. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, let's talk site plan. So if you'd like to, so if you'd like to come up, we'll let these guys hang around.
My name is Dean Yowich and I'm an architect representing Seven Brew. I brought a, a little site plan that's kind of zoomed out, but since I. There's sort of some concern that maybe there was confusion about where this was, but you guys are pretty aware of what we're talking about.
It's good to see it's all laid over top of all that we can.
Chairman, if you could pass it up.
Yes.
The city engineer didn't want to.
Oh, geez. We got a couple more.
Yeah.
I got one more. So I guess you heard some of the discussion. We were talking before. I know with these guys behind me have some more detailed things they'd probably like to bring up. If you'd like, go ahead and get some of the, if there's anything else to do.
Sure, and then my report's dated January first. So first and foremost, the, the scale isn't, it doesn't scale at the eleven by seventeen. I don't know if it was, however it was printed, but my eleven by seventeen that I got does not scale. So to, to, you know, confirm dimensions and things, I can't do that for the time being. But you all have a revised site plan. Just make sure that's printed to the scale.
Should, do you want full size or? The, the application's at eleven by seventeen, so we either need to change the scale or can we use a different size, like twenty-four by thirty-six?
What, what did you scale it to?
Well, it was, the original drawing is twenty-four by thirty-six.
Oh, that's fine. I'll, that's a big boy set of plans. I'll take those. The, the, if you want to re-scale the eleven by seventeen, whatever you want to do.
Okay, got it.
Yeah, I'm good either way. I just need them to scale.
I got it.
Yeah, I know the applic, it says that because it's, it's just for the ease of packing it down, but you still need to be to scale.
Okay.
And we, we already had a conversation about item number two, which is the, the size of the lot. And we had some conversation about the ATM and sort of traffic. And I do think there needs to be some analysis of, you know, traffic and looking at the peak generators. Obviously, people are not coming and sitting and hanging out. They're coming in, getting their coffee, stacking, going out. I think that's, from what I can tell from looking at the website, it's kind of Seven Brew's model. And that creates traffic and you need to understand how that impacts the, the lights in the surrounding area. I don't know if you, has there been a traffic impact study?
They're not, not specific to this site, but they have, they're gonna submit information on, on how many cars, on they typically generate, how long they're there and that kind of thing that they have available.
Like the stacking and the queuing and all that?
Right, and yeah.
And I think that's super helpful to have, but, and I'll leave this up to the city engineer.
Typically, it's not like a, it generally doesn't cause more traffic on your main roads because it's not like a destination place. It's just, you know, people, you know, it, it doesn't add to the, to the traffic of your main roads.
Yeah. Well, Starbucks would be a good example. We, when we went through the Starbucks process here with planning commission, we really were cognizant of traffic and pushing it all out to the signalized intersection, which you, fortunately, you have that here. But that's a, a much smaller site that's not part of a larger development. And it's not wedged in, if you will, with other things like the ATM, like the Tesla charging and the cross-access between the egress of a bike outback and, and those other places.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, Brian. I think the concern is internal traffic flow, not so much that we're gonna add traffic to Route eighty-two or Commons Boulevard. I, I don't think that's a concern. It's, it's an internal traffic flow concern that we have, so. I'm sorry, go.
No, no, you're, no, that's, that's absolutely correct. And then we already talked about the setback and, and the setback for the dumpster. Take a look at that as you move forward, create the parcel. If it's gonna be an issue, you might want to jump out and get that into the board zoning appeals as well. So take a look at your, your dumpster, your building and look at the setbacks. And then I just noted the traffic utilizing the pass-through lane heading east on the south side of the site appears to be in direct conflict with the westbound drive aisle lane on the adjacent parcel. So that's just something, again, it's not necessarily to scale or not for the scale, it's hard to tell, but it looks like it's gonna be in conflict, so.
Which one was that?
Take a look at that.
So I think that's why I brought the zoomed-out drawing to show how this was above, uh, above that three-way intersection currently.
Yeah, this, this, this looks like it's not in conflict, so, but.
Which were, where were you talking about?
Here, this traffic coming out. They, they're dumping into, this is a, this aisle, like, I think it's right here. This is a, goes this direction.
Yeah.
Goes to the west and then this comes to the east. I was just concerned with, that there might be a conflict there.
I mean, I guess they're, I mean, it still is an awkward.
It is like an.
Intersection, for lack of a better word.
What's the third lane for the most southern lane?
I was gonna ask that too, Jim.
The.
Bailout lane?
This bypass?
This outside, so you got drive-through, drive-through lane. What's the third one really for?
It is, it's like, yeah, it's like a bypass and if, and it's to keep this stacking from, you know, piling up on the, on a main internal aisle. So if they, they, they prefer not to use the third one because it's, it becomes a problem operationally, crossing two lanes of traffic to. But if it, if it comes to it, that's like the worst-case scenario.
How would that operate? I'm sorry, I'm just jumping in. How would that operate as a bailout lane? I mean, the first two lanes aren't enclosed by a curb or a wall.
Not ideal, but it, it would allow somebody to, to get out of line if they chose to.
From lane two.
And how many cars can queue here? I mean, it looks like only.
Fifteen to sixteen in the two lanes that they have there and then.
Each lane are together?
What's that?
Each lane are combined?
No, combined, two together. They said fifteen to sixteen was the.
Okay, I was gonna say, it looks like, oh, you can only stack about six.
I had five, you know.
You had five, okay, yeah.
The code, I think, says six, you have to stack, you have to at least provide stacking for six. It looked like five, but again, you know, just wasn't able to confirm that. And, you know, as we stay on the conversation of the, the quote bailout lane, it's, it's just not necessary to have on this site. Chick-fil-A, who carries tons of volume through their double drive-through, doesn't have a bailout lane. You're in, you're in, man. Order your food.
Starbucks doesn't have one either.
Yeah, and that might, that might help you with, you know, your, your site planning, your site planning issues with setbacks and things, if you shift things a little bit.
But what's nice about it is if they truly are fully stacked, operationally, they bring, they open that third lane and then they bring drinks to the third one. I was, I was gonna ask if that was part of it. That's, that's operationally, call it a relief though.
Yeah.
Last resort.
Do they typically get that busy? Does anybody know? Like, is that third lane gonna be used a ton?
Sounds like they have some counts. I don't know.
So.
And I guess, I'm sorry.
The frequency of, I don't know the frequency of that happening.
Yeah, because my concern is this area here that I drew here. At many different times of day, not just say morning or evening rush, this is stacked with cars all the way up here. So one of the issues, I think Seven Brew's gonna have is with people wanting to get in there who are gonna be waiting in traffic line here. I know I've had opportunity to try to traverse this here and you can't because nobody leaves it open for traffic to move through. Their cars just stack up there and it just becomes a mess. And the lights are timed. They only seem to allow like maybe three or four cars at a time before a change. That could be wrong.
I could be wrong on that, but it seems like it's a pretty quick light there because they want to assume, keep traffic moving this way.
You gotta be baby too.
That's, that area there is a real big choke point.
Yeah, you sold my thought on adjacent, but I'm going to bring up the exact same concern.
Well, and just to finish, I get it, this is probably marketing, but if you look at Seven Brew's website, they have a really snazzy video on the homepage that makes it look like it's a college frat party in the parking lot and everybody's just kind of hanging out and drinking from cars. I saw, I saw shotgunning Red Bulls and, you know, all that stuff like that, so just wanted to make sure that's not the business model, but maybe just trying to make it sound like it's a hype video, but yeah, if you watch the video, it makes it look like it's the place to go hang out on a Friday night and not, and park and stay. I assume the business model's not that, but, yeah.
That's what the website says.
Yeah, there you go.
I have a question. This little, this little, this, I guess it's an easement or something, a little walkway. Cars would go through there, but then you, just to show you still own that little hunk going on to Route eighty, Route eighty-two, is that, is that what it is?
Shaded area? I think that's where they show their.
Probably utilities.
It's, yeah, the gray on this plan, I think, was their construction area and they were showing, taking some of the utilities up that way.
But you said you needed this, this parcel and.
Yeah, the parcel.
Is it a walkway or?
No, that little gray area, I think, is just their construction zone, because they have to cut up here to get some utilities, so they're saying.
And the only reason you have this is the city of Macedonia's rule that you have to have something about it.
The wider, yeah, the wider lot split is the.
Otherwise, you wouldn't need that, right?
This one here or?
You know, this.
Oh, yeah, that is, yeah, because the flag-shaped lot that they were talking about, yeah, that's there because of what we believe is the requirement to have part of the parcel.
If you're going to get a variance, could you get a variance for that too? It seems like an odd thing to have.
They allow variance for a landlocked parcel unless you're upset with us.
No, the board zoning appeals does not have jurisdiction over the subdivision regulations, so.
That's why we have a flag, even though we have the ECI to let cross traffic.
Yeah, okay. We've gotten a little bit of a free form here, but I guess we'll continue. Along those lines, or along the lines of the conversation about the third lane, and I know you're not the operations guy, but during the rush time, you know, the first two lanes fill up, I guess, and that's why they have the third lane there in case they need it, but is there somebody out there directing traffic to get people into the third lane? I guess what I could envision happening is during the rush, the lanes stack up and there's five or six cars that can fit in there, and then they're just going to stack in that main aisle that goes in front of, from the traffic signal down to Hobby Lobby, you know what I mean? Because people are just going to wait and they're going to block the aisle.
If they told us that they bring signage out to show that the third lane's open.
Yeah.
Those would be something to call, right?
Yeah, they said we could do that.
Okay, yeah, we would at least need that, and you brought Chick-fil-A before, and you guys probably all been to Chick-fil-A before, and they have a team of traffic cops and order takers out there. I'm not saying that the coffee shop needs that, but.
At another location.
Might need some human interaction out there, otherwise I fear that the main driveway is going to get blocked, that people are, it's just driver habit, right Chairman?
Yep.
I would ask the question, was there any thought to just taking that whole scheme and rotating it so that the service building, the dumpster, everything is farther away from Aurora Road and then instead that stacking is kind of in this no man's land? And then, you know, I really sketched it really quick, but then you preserve this one-way instead of having a two-way aisle where everybody's driving on the left, that was my major concern because you had traffic this way. You preserve the one-way and that's capturing the traffic coming in off that.
I think it brings.
Macedonia Commons.
I think the idea was that it brings the, you know, the entrance to the coffee further away from eighty-two.
Yeah, because, yeah, I agree, I thought about that too. And that would solve some problems, but then I think the problem is, yeah, everybody comes in off eighty-two and then they, it becomes a free-for-all, somehow you got to get to the other side of the building to get into the lane.
Well, I feel like.
Into the stack and people are going to go all different ways and.
I feel like they would be forced to make that left down the Hobby Lobby parking lot, presumably, you know, in the heaviest traffic times once before they're open, but then they're making that left farther in and it, it actually would, would kind of relieve some of that congestion there coming in off of Aurora. Meaning if they, if they had to turn left down this aisle.
Yeah.
Instead of.
I would think half the people probably would try to turn in that very first aisle and then, you know, that lane would be blocked and.
What if you could restripe those parking spots to go the other direction, just on that side of the aisle? So that that could be an eastbound aisle.
Give them the property too, if they meet that requirement.
Well, let's let them come up with the, designing, but these are the concerns.
It's something that you probably want to consider. I know it gets, you got to get then to the entrance, but then you're coming back out closer to the intersection. It's just, if they haven't seen this on a Saturday, I think Bob was mentioning he was out there on.
I'm out there all the time, yeah.
And it was backed up, you know, just, just people getting into aisles was backed up to Route eighty-two.
Not even on a Saturday.
It's not even on peak hour.
Like when PostNet was over there, I, I frequent to go there multiple times during week, during business hours during the weekday, and this is backed up even that on Monday through Friday, so.
Joe, do you have more stuff you were in?
I, I don't know. I, I don't know.
Put in there which.
I don't know, I guess the only other concern I have, I'll try to verbally, or maybe I'll show you on the map, you know, we think most customers will come in from eighty-two, but could have some people that come this way and then they come in this road and as they get to here, well, then what do they do? If they continue straight, you know, they can't really make this hairpin turn, so that's going to cause traffic problems, you know, people are going to have to make a three-point turn, I guess, to get into the lane, you know, or are they wise enough to go this way and do we want them going this way? And then they have to try to make a left right here, close to the intersection, you know, with the short throat, get in there. Either way, it's clumsy.
It's usually blocked too.
Correct, correct.
Well, that's where flipping at hundred and eighty might.
That's what I say, would definitely solve that problem, but might cause some other problems.
But at least, I think you could make all the turns, like you're talking about, yeah, that hairpin turn at the end, you can't do, but if you came in off of eighty-two and had to go down an aisle to get into line, you could at least, those are comfortable turns to get in instead of jujujuju to get around in that. Because you'd have to, yeah, come this way, you've got to go all the way around it.
Could also go this way.
But, yeah, I kind of think they need to show us how they can make all of the internal traffic work. Would you agree?
Yeah, we're not.
I don't want to design it, yeah, we can't solve it in this room, I don't want to design it, I'm not going to ask anybody else to at this moment, but.
I guess in your, in your report, you did ask for a traffic impact study.
Yes.
More than just probably, you know, just the numbers of what they're going to generate. I think that study probably, like you said, it's not just.
More than just the counts, yes.
Yeah, you need to, how is it going to work onsite, off the, off the roadway? How the internal intersection's going to work, how's the traffic flow, what are the queues going to look like, stuff, all that kind of stuff. So it's a little more than just a typical traffic study, it might analyze the intersection of eighty-two, that should be in there as well, but I think you got to have some kind of internal flow discussion.
Yeah, I understand. Seven Brew's providing raw vehicle counts, how many cars they expect to have each hour of the day, and that's great, that's the basis, I guess, of the traffic impact study, but to Chairman's point, yeah, it needs to analyze how the entire site will flow at all times, of all the various maneuvers that may or may not be able to occur, how they be easily handled.
Is there anything else we need to throw out there? I mean, obviously, we can't do anything with this until we get the lot split figured out.
Yeah, I provided other comments, but I think they're pretty self-explanatory, I mean, we need landscaping, lose the river rock, put some landscaping, green up the site, have a landscape architect design it, and then just building architecture is going to need to sit and have, I think, have some conversation, probably need to, once you digest all of this, have a conversation with Pam, sit and talk, but there's some issues that just, you know, that I noted in my report about building architecture, and I know Pam has a pretty expansive set of comments that she wanted to be addressed, so I think those are things that have to be worked through.
Yeah, Dean, have you been involved in any of the architecture discussions thus far? Pam has actually spoken with representatives from Seven Brew on three separate occasions. Were you a part of any of that?
No, I wasn't.
And Pam, Pam Schultz is our architectural consultant, and I had put her in touch with the executive people from Seven Brew, and like I said, she's had three separate conversations and from the plan and her review, it sounds as though none of that information was taken to heart by Seven Brew.
There was clearly some loss in translation or however you want to put it, but I wasn't aware that there was any.
And my point is just, I just didn't know if you were part of those conversations dating up to this meeting.
No, I wasn't even aware that they had occurred.
The one thing I didn't note in my report, and regrettably, I guess I could have supplemented it, but I don't know the purpose of the out, of that cooler, that out cooler, but make the building a little bit bigger with the cooler inside, because that's the last thing that we need to see from eighty-two is a cooler. So from a design perspective, that is not, that's just not optimal.
Okay, well, it's not, it's going to be brick and have a roof on it, you won't be able to tell it's a cooler, it'll look like a building.
Well, why can't they just make the building a little bigger?
They're looking to, when, they're looking to have a pre-manufactured building show up, built and put it onsite.
It's an industrialized unit.
Yeah, so it's an industrialized unit, it'll be completely made, shipped out, set down.
And you're just putting lipstick on it.
And then we'll put, then we're, we're putting bricks and we're putting a roof on it and that kind of stuff to, to make it not look like a, you know, a shipping container.
So they, they aren't able to have the industrialized, pre-made, it's, the building be larger to include the cooler?
It's the, that's a, that's a whole separate, like, completely out of my purview. Of course they can't, I mean, they could, sure, anything can be done, but that, that requires a whole separate process to state the aisle and it's quite lengthy.
Yeah. Well, I, you know, I don't know how the commission wants to deal with that, but that's just something that I.
If you could relay, we're not crazy about that, really, and maybe even mention to them too, since you guys aren't here, I know it's not your area, but we take our architectural review very seriously and, you know, that could hold up a whole project, so we may have these conversations with Pam. They should listen closely to what she's saying, try and incorporate what they can because we're pretty solid on, you know, our recommendations.
Yeah, Chairman, I agree, the architecture is very important, especially in the middle of the town center, right?
Yeah. You know.
Yeah. I agree too. They need to pay attention to the materials they're using. Yeah.
Okay. I guess there's no other things need to discuss, I'll make a motion to continue this to the next meeting.
I'll second.
All right. All in favor?
Mr. Chairman, may I just interrupt you?
Please.
You continue to the next meeting, I don't know that the applicant will have the time to address these issues, and so maybe you want to continue where it's, non-assigned date, because I just, the middle deadline is like the right day.
Not true.
Still, it's always quick. Yeah, I'll revise that motion, continue this to an designated date. Good? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I was there for a minute. Yeah. We were there at the same time. Really?
It used to be a bump to the.
I've never been out there.
Why do we still do that?
Sometimes our peas, if we start popping our peas. Jason, go ahead.
This is on the street, this is at the drive aisle, which means the building. They're all one building. They have building, they have.
Walmart.
They have front and the commons. They have front and the common block. This, this goes like this and then down, their frontage is all this eighty-two.
They moved this down, could this be pointing to?
They have to shift it over to get it to the junk board. The bottom line is.
Right.
I mean, you know, they better be darned with coffee.
All right, how about we motion to adjourn?
Oh, sorry.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And don't forget, next month is also a week early.